Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Bowers-Sotz?
Here.
Ms. Shenoweth? Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda or any staff reports? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Barnes and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This is now time for the public input. I know since we had the public hearing, it seems a little confusing to some people, but I do have public input cards. I have some people who don't want to talk and then other people who want to speak at the time of the agenda item. So unless there's public input on anything else except which I'm guessing most of these have to do with the Carl Foundation discussion, we'll move on. Is there anybody who wants to come? Okay. We have item number five, which is the discussion of the Carl Foundation request for street and alley vacation. This is for Kohler Avenue, Bucy Avenue, and Park Street, and I'm guessing Ms. Barnes has to recuse herself again.
I would like to recuse myself at this time. Thank you.
I have quite a few people. If I misstate your name, I'm sorry. I'm not always great about reading handwriting, so.
Yeah, could we perhaps, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, maybe do the staff report where we hear from Bill Gray? I know sometimes we do it in either order, but I think it would be helpful in cases like this because there are a lot of complications to hear the staff briefly give their report about the issue and sort of put it on the floor and then do the public input and then do our discussion. That's a request and you could decide which way you prefer.
I don't care what we do. I just thought since some of these aren't people who really want to talk, I was just going to just make, if they didn't want to talk, just make their. Okay. Philip Mayet in support, but he didn't want to speak to the committee. He might be the only one, so we'll get to the rest of you. A lot of people want to talk to me. Oh, no, here's one other. Pat Johnson in support. So the rest of these will talk after Bill Gray. Bill, go ahead.
I'll try to be brief. Basically, for discussion purposes tonight, we're responding to a request by Carl Foundation Hospital to close certain streets and alleys in your packets. We have an exhibit that locates those streets and alleys. Particularly with, peculiar to street vacations is, of course, the need to hold a public hearing prior to any council action. Carl has met previously here to discuss their desires for expansion of a heart and vascular institute. At that presentation, they've also talked about the specific alleys and streets to be vacated and why, and also talked about parking needs. And several months ago, it appeared in their analysis that there were more parking requirements with this particular project, but as I understand it, with further assessments of the moving of the Carl Clinic operations to southeastern Van and southwest Champaign, that the amount of trips generated from that use suddenly caused a reassessment of not needing those extra surface parking spaces north of church streets and hence not the urgency, if you will, to look at those issues and home demolition, et cetera. So there was a fairly dramatic change with respect to the need to expand the MIC based on that analysis. There was also traffic impact analysis done by a consultant working for Carl. They went through, there was a rather detailed report. They talked about what those impacts would be and the simulation of traffic within the area. And staff has reviewed and looked at that report too and find the analysis acceptable and satisfactory. And of course, there's been neighborhood comments and input, as we've heard tonight and earlier, at the neighborhood meetings and at previous meetings here. Process-wise, we have actually received three appraisals. There was two appraisals initially, then we had a review appraiser. We've come up with dollar values for the vacations of the streets that are acceptable to staff, are acceptable, as I understand it, to Carl that need your review and approval. We typically, in going through this process, you know, hear comments from the public. Then council, after a public hearing, has anywhere from 10 days to a year to respond to yes or no with respect to the vacation itself. Generally speaking, we receive near 100 percent support by adjacent property owners that are impacted when streets are closed. And I have to tell you that on the exhibit attached, that there are four properties in particular that are still not owned by Carl. And that adds to a little bit more work on our part with respect to considerations for those streets. The first I would bring to your attention is Bucy Avenue and that they do not own the property at 605 Bucy. They do not own the property at 816 West Park. And there's two parcels on Church, 803 and 807 West Church. To kind of go through this, if the city council is to consider vacations of those streets and alley, typically what we do is we request that we have an agreement from that property owner, that they're supportive of the vacation, an agreement to the city from, in this case, Carl, that they would provide ingress egress at all times up until the point when they would own that property, whenever that might be. And then lastly, that they would have a sign-off, if you will, from that property owner that they would not accept or merely would be willing to convey their portion of that vacated part of the street to Carl, so that it would not, you know, complicate matters. I think I've kind of touched all bases as to process and what has happened to date and be happy to answer any questions.
Bill, so there are two alleyways that seem to be just sort of like, you know, if they were coming to us separately, we'd probably just, they'd just happen. That's the ones on between Park and University, Orchard and McCullough. I take it that's, that everything around there is owned by Carl and if this were a neighborhood or something, we would just, we would sell it off or turn it over, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And the same applies for the alley between University Park, Bucy, and Lincoln, right? So those are just completely free and clear?
Correct.
And is there any particular reason why the city would need to have those alleys? Do we have any utility issues or anything like that related to those alleys?
We do have utility issues, but, you know, those would have to be accommodated in various ways, whether they're, you know, electric overhead, you know, lines. It's my understanding that Carl would like to have those buried at some point in the future. Right now, they're working on a phase one of a parking lot at the northwest corner of McCullough and University Avenue, and they would have two other phases in the future. So I know there's a desire to have those overhead utilities relocated. There is a sanitary sewer line and that would remain in place, is my understanding. There would not be a relocation of it and that would be fine, that it stay in place and that we would have an easement so we would always have access to that sewer.
And second question. So there are four properties that are abut certain areas here. Two, 803 and 807 West Church. With respect to the alley, do those homes use the alley? Are they affected by the closure of the alley?
We would need a letter from them if they didn't mind the alley being closed, that that would be acceptable to them. At this point, I don't have that information.
So at this point, we don't have anything from any of the four property owners? Is that correct?
Correct. It's my understanding from the Carl representatives that they are in contact with these property owners. There may be new information coming, forthcoming between now and the September council meeting that, you know, I would certainly pass on to city council members. Or there could be just a decision to make no decision on those parcels pending any future acquisitions or agreements or what have you with those four property owners. So I think, to be clear, for the Heart and Vascular Institute to move forward, the real critical vacations are Kohler between Church and University and Park between Bucy and Kohler. And Carl needs a determination from the city council on those two streets in order to move forward with their application to the state for a certificate of need. So without that, they can't move forward. The other streets could be, an alley could be vacated at a later time, but it's not as on a critical path as those two streets.
Thank you.
Questions for Bill from anybody else? It's quiet tonight. Well, then, okay, then we'll move on to public input. James of 302 North Orchard Street. And if you'll state your name, address, and limit your comments to five minutes.
Yes, my name is James Kipers. I live at 302 North Orchard Street. I don't have a prepared statement and I will be very brief. I generally agree with the position that Kohler shouldn't be closed because I'm afraid it'll force all the traffic onto Lincoln. And I just have a feeling that Lincoln traffic is quite enough and shouldn't have more. My specific viewpoint, though, is that as a bicyclist, you're going to close off the one route that I have from north Urbana and the area north of Urbana to where I live. Urbana isn't all that friendly as a bicycle town, I'm afraid. The brick streets and the poorly maintained streets kind of jar my teeth when I ride across them. And Lincoln Avenue is treacherous with all the traffic, so if you take out Kohler, what's left? I guess you'd have to go pretty far west over by the university or east to Broadway, another bone-jarring experience. So that's my position. I like Kohler.
Are there any questions for James? Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Hoyle?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Hoyle and I live at 2207 South Cottage Grove in Urbana. I am here tonight representing the Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit District. And the city had asked the district to take a look at a couple of issues. The first was about the street closure and its impact on the gray route and current transit service. And there was an analysis of that and MTD feels that they can reroute the gray route and that there will be no degradation of service to the public or to Carl. And the neighborhood adjoining Carl then raised questions regarding demand management for issues that we've heard raised here this evening on congestion and parking, et cetera. And we had provided a response to that to city staff and the mayor asked us to come forward and do a little bit of a presentation here tonight. In addition to that, the MTD staff recently met with Carl representatives and we discussed strategies for addressing the neighborhood's concerns about congestion and mobility management. And the CUMTD is currently halfway through a three-year planning effort that's called MYPLAN. And that is a plan to develop mobility strategies and policies that would help implement the Long Range Transportation Plan 2025 that was adopted and approved by the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study Policy Committee in 2004. As part of that effort, we did electronic surveys to employers in the community and Carl participated in that. And we have offered to provide Carl with the results of their employees' responses to assist them in updating their 1997 trip reduction program that they had done previously. I provided you with a handout that has a little summary of information and I just wanted to briefly say that congestion management programs are often called transportation demand management programs, depending on whether or not there are services provided or management policies adopted beyond services. And what those are is a set of strategies that help result in a more efficient use of transportation resources. These sorts of programs have been implemented by private corporations. They've been implemented by community-wide associations, by associations of groups, of businesses, public-private partnerships, et cetera. The way that those sorts of programs are structured can vary. And as part of our MYPLAN process, this is something that the MTD is looking at. CUMTD is committed to working with Carl and the neighborhood and the cities to reduce congestion. It is our goal to help facilitate lots of choices and mobility for employees, residents, and patients. And then I have included in your handout information about variety of programs that are often included in those sorts of transportation demand programs. And then I included also some websites if you want further information that you could go to to pull up additional data. I also attached to your handout, MTD had zip code data for employees provided to them by the university and by Carl. And so we plotted that out. And you will see from looking at the map that Carl does have a dramatically lower percentage of their employees living in Champaign and Urbana than the university does. And so most of the Carl employees are choosing not to live close enough that they could walk or bike easily, as many of the university employees do. And so that's something that Carl is going to be taking a look at as to how they can respond to that. They do pull their employees from a much larger geographic area in terms of the commuters than the university does in terms of the percentages of their employees who commute in. So, and that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Cynthia? Thank you for your presentation. Linda Mayet? Am I pronouncing your last name correctly?
Hello. My name is Linda Mayet and I live at 3206 Barronry Drive in Urbana. And unlike most of the people who've spoken to you, I'm a relative newbie to this community. We have lived in Urbana for a little over a year now and chose to move to Urbana because we liked the kind of warmth of the community and the neighborhood. But we're also very new to the Champaign-Urbana area and we came to this area because of Carl and because of its reputation. My husband and I both work there. But I would just like to speak in favor of what Carl is trying to do and to maybe give a little perspective on someone who hasn't lived in the community for their whole life. I'm just very pleased to be able to live in a community where we have the level of health care that is available to us at Carl. And I wonder sometimes if it's not easy to take that for granted when it's always been here. But there are very few communities our size who have over 300 physicians who practice in multi-specialty groups and we don't have to go out of our community to receive that care. And I think it's a very important thing for the community to realize that while there may be inconveniences and there may be some things that will not be optimal for a minority of the people in the community, if these streets are closed, I think the larger good for Urbana, for Champaign, for the broader communities that Carl serves would be much better served by moving forward with the proposal. And my husband and I just would like to go on record as speaking in favor of that.
Are there any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda. John, and I don't want to mispronounce your last name, so you live on Bedford Drive in Champaign?
I'm part of the Carl presentation. Carl actually has a few minutes of a presentation prepared-
Okay.
-that Dr. Wimbley would do led by John Snyder, John Aquino, Paul Wheezy.
All four of you are right here. Let me, I only have two other people. Thanks. Catherine Connor? Oh, you gave that to me. And Don Greeley?
My name is Don Greeley. I live at 2206 South Carrington in Urbana, and I have lived there for the past 30 years. So I'm a longtime Urbana resident. Went to the university here, so my roots are deep here. I work at Carl Clinic. I'm the head of the pulmonary medicine department there. I do pulmonary medicine, also practice sleep disorders at Carl. I thought it might be useful, very briefly, just to mention kind of an insider's view of the culture at Carl, both on the side of the clinic and the hospital, the foundation side. And I've certainly bounced around inside those organizations for a long time. Basically, and these are locally owned. These are locally run organizations. I mean, they, neither organization has to respond to boards of directors in some distant northern Illinois community or some other state. They're locally owned, locally run. They're run by people who live here, who live in the community, people who care about the community. We care about people getting well and we care about the community around us. I would like to just comment briefly on the safety issue that was, that Napoleon Knight brought up. I mean, I cross Kohler twice a day, seven in the morning, seven in the evening roughly, going into the, in and out of the, my place of work. And it's kind of a busy street and there are a lot of pedestrians who cross that. And at least once a year, I see a car that just burns right through the stop sign at Park and Kohler. They're going south, they're kind of focused their attention on the stoplights at the next block and they don't even see the stop sign. I've, believe me, I've learned to just wait there and be sure everybody's stopping before I cross, but it's only a matter of time before some tragedy occurs there. So I certainly do support the closure of these streets. I think it would be in the best interests of, you know, the local community as well as the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Were we letting you? Okay. Do you all four want to come up at the same time or?
Let's grab some chairs. Lynn, we're going to take yours since you're not using.
How do you pronounce your last name? John, how do you pronounce your last name?
I was, that's how I was going to say it, but I didn't want to.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'll go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Good evening. We're here tonight to provide you with some further information related to our request to vacate streets and alleys within our Medical Institute campus zone. I'd like to start with emphasizing again that I think we've shown that we've fully abided by the development agreement we signed in 1996. And in many ways, we feel like we've gone above and beyond to make our campus safe for the neighbors and for our patients and visitors. The proposed Heart and Vascular Center, which combined with the North Tower, will be, in the future, combined to be, form the cornerstone of our campus. We believe our proposed design and location are the best for patient care and our ability to efficiently and safely provide services to our patients. It is our vision to strengthen our specialty referral center on our Urbana campus. It is our preference to expand in Urbana. The information we are providing tonight is really in direct response to the questions that you had at the July 23 presentation. So the areas of interest that we're going to address tonight, first of all, is the use of the third and fourth floor of the proposed Heart and Vascular Institute for Utilities, the pedestrian walkway and bicycle path-ish questions, bicycle safety on the south end of the Loop Road, Loop Ring Road, McCullough on the south side of University, the MTD bus routes, and then the trip reduction program or what we heard earlier was transportation demand management. So we brought in several of our expert consultants to help us with that. First would be John Aquino. He's an engineer with GHR Engineering in Champaign-Urbana. He's going to address the use of the buildings, third and fourth floor for the utilities. And then Paul Wheezy, you've heard from before from JGR, he's going to help us visualize what the pedestrian walkway and bicycle path is going to look like. He's also going to discuss the bicycle safety on the south end of the Loop Road and then show you the MTD bus route changes with the closure of Kohler.
My comments will be brief. I was asked just to describe kind of generically why we would put the mechanical rooms on the third and the fourth floor of this facility. These types of hospitals are required to deliver certain quantities of conditioned and filtered air to all the patient rooms. You have options. Generally, you could put all the equipment down in the basement. You could put all the equipment down, up on the roof, or you could put all the equipment on the middle, in the middle floors. It's more economically viable to install the mechanical equipment and, I'm speaking mostly of air handling units, the fans, the filters, the cooling coils and the heating coils in the center so you can distribute down three floors and up three floors as opposed to deliver from eight floors up or from eight floors down. It just becomes a simpler thing to do and it becomes a little bit easier for the facilities people to maintain. The other item that we look at is introducing the quantities of fresh air. In installing the equipment in the basement, you run into problems of trying to build areaways or bringing fresh air into the basement from above grade. So that's really why we're designating portions of these floors to be used for the air handling equipment.
I wanted to talk about the pedestrian and bicycle routes through and around the campus. There've been many comments brought up and some additional tonight about that. This diagram indicates a comprehensive approach to pedestrian and cycle movements through and around campus. We have two routes planned. And this, I'll just walk you through the two routes. One that's depicted in blue, which is most closely tied to the route that people have talked about going straight down Kohler. Our intent is using combination of the streets as well as walks or walks designated specifically for the bike routes would be to, someone coming down south on Kohler would, would need to go about half a block to the west on Church where there would be a crossing of Church on a designated path at this location, down to Park where there'll be another designated path on Park Street where we would loop around on the west side of the, in ambulance parking area, and then be back, right back on Kohler at a signalized intersection at University and can continue south. So it's, it's just a couple of diversions from going straight down on Kohler right now. We'll be providing this path for both pedestrians and cyclists. An additional route that we're, that Carl's been supportive of for many years and have helped construct a existing path now that's on the edge of Crystal Lake Park, continues through Crystal Lake Park to the intersection of McCullough and Park. The route's in place here along McCullough. Again, a signalized intersection at McCullough and University. This path's also in place. And at this point, at the, where we intersect with the Norfolk Southern tracks, as a temporary condition, we would route- condition, we would route the path along what we call the South Loop Road, and I'll show you a diagram in a minute that shows the area available for that back to Kohler. But we are also in communication with the railroad, and we're also trying to better understand some of the land ownership issues south of the tracks. We're, we're working to put in an at-grade crossing at this location that would continue this, this bike path onto McCullough into the city of Urbana, would connect up with Main Street, and could link to downtown, the university, and other locations. So this, this crossing isn't gonna happen overnight because of the number of parties involved, but we are working on trying to get that crossing, but in the interim would provide this route along the Loop Road back to Kohler. We have a couple of fly-throughs, if you can follow along. The red depicts the actual, let's go back one. Yeah, the red depicts, depicts the pedestrian route that I just described, and we've got one movie that goes through along the, this is the first route, we're coming down Kohler. That would be the new heart center in the background. This would be turning and going down Church Street for about half a block, and then this would be the, the path west of the heart center. And then this diagram indicates that there'd be the eight-foot path for bikes and pedestrians. There's parking on the west, there'll be a landscape buffer on both sides separating it from the heart center on the east. Continuing south, we would turn down Park. This is looking back to the east, and again, we'd have Park Street on the south, we'd have landscape buffers separating the path from the parking as well as the heart center. Continuing east, we begin to turn to the south on Kohler, you'll see the proposed ambulance parking, we would be west of that. And then at the emergency department, where we've talked a lot tonight, there, the path would be on the west side of Kohler, so there's again a separation of that from the turning areas and the activities outside the ED. Continuing south, we would cross University at a signalized intersection, and continuing south on Kohler, much the way the path goes today. So that's our first clip, is to the route through campus. And then we've got one other clip of the route coming through Crystal Lake Park, south on Orchard, again, it's depicted in the red line. There's, there's the new bus route, I'll talk about that in a second. But this is the existing path through Crystal Lake Park. Again, we have a nice bit of separation from Park Street with a nice landscape buffer, and this is the existing path going through Crystal Lake Park. Continuing south around McCullough, we'll be crossing Park Street, you'll see again the path designated in red. Continuing along McCullough, we're approaching the University-McCullough intersection, again, that's a signalized intersection with crosswalk signals. This path is all in place, again, continuing south on McCullough extended, you'll see the south parking garage on your right-hand side. And then at this location, again, this is where we've got the parking garage on the right, we've got the drive going into the parking garage, and we've got a separate path exclusively for cyclists and pedestrians, again, separated by landscape. Now, this location is where I'm talking about an at-grade crossing across the tracks right here. This would be the Carl Loop Road going south along the parking garage, and we'll be working with the railroad to get this at-grade crossing. But in the meantime, we'll provide a path along the south garage. What we have room for is a, there's an existing three-foot pedestrian path here, and we would add a five-foot bicycle path, so the total is eight feet, which is constant, consistent with the width of the path elsewhere through the park and along McCullough. Three of it's on a raised concrete walk, and five of it's shared with the vehicles along, along the south side of, of the Carl campus. And then just to continue on, there we go. So this would be the route along that South Loop Road that would take you back to Kohler, and then you'll see the new cancer center. There is an existing crossing that is in place at Orchard, and this is the type of crossing that we have in mind up further at, at McCullough. So that's just a depiction of these routes that we encourage people to visit the campus. By no means does the closing of Kohler, are we trying to impede any movement through and around campus, and we feel this is a comprehensive approach as to how to get pedestrians and cyclists through and around campus. And just one last diagram to reinforce what Cynthia was talking about, MTD. This, the existing gray line comes on University to, to Kohler, and this dot pattern represents its existing route. And working with MTD, we are proposing that this gray line would, would add a signalized intersection, it would turn and go down the Loop Road or McCullough. These symbols represent a proposed bus shelter at the corner of Orchard and, and McCullough, and then the bus would continue to Kohler and then continue north on Kohler. So just a slight diversion from the route that exists today, and we, and we worked with MTD on this, on this routing of the, of the gray line. The orange line, which continues on University, would remain just as it is today with the existing bus stop here at the corner of Kohler and University. So that's just a graphic depiction of what Cynthia was talking about a few minutes ago.
I'm going to speak for just a moment about some of the trip reduction efforts and the things that we're doing to manage traffic on the campus. We've got a lot of different things since the 1997 trip reduction program was done. Certainly begun to rely on the fairgrounds much more. There's increased parking there, and that's not only for our employees, but we know that we've begun to see more patients coming in from the interstate to that location. Paul spoke to the bike path creation along Crystal Lake Park. It was part of the development agreement, and that's now completed up to the fairgrounds. We certainly rely an awful lot on shuttles with those fairgrounds and that parking that is up there. We have, during our peaks, especially during the winter when we have inclement weather, we run four and up to five shuttles at a time in, in cycle to those fairgrounds to move, to move our employees and to move our patients and visitors. During different times of the year, we are certainly getting used to using some remote lots. We've been using the vineyards lot on an increasing basis now that their construction is complete and their lots are done. We've begun to rely on that lot as an expansion of our shuttle service for our increased parking needs over the years with students. We have, at any one given time, 150 students from the university and various institutes of higher learning that are coming to Carl for ongoing training, and that's a group that we have located in that location during the school year now, when school's in session, and they're on our campus, and we are shuttling to that regularly during, during the school year now. We also utilize them all during different times of the year, during the fair, so shuttling is something that we have begun, have been doing for years, but are beginning to look at how to do more efficiently and how to best utilize that resource. We have done in the past some shuttling from a distant level. We, for a period of time, ran shuttles to Vermillion County. That was something that came out of that last trip reduction study, was something that we publicized a lot, that we promoted a lot. However, we found that it was very sparingly used, and that was why it was a service that we discontinued when it came time to make the capital investment to replace that particular shuttle. It was not a service that we continued at that point. But we do spend a lot of time looking at how can we manage traffic on our campus, and since earlier this year, we have not only done our traffic study analysis, but are continuing to look at how to manage parking in particular. That's certainly been a discussion over the last year with the strains that we've seen on some of our primary parking structures, such as the north parking deck. And as we have been working on repairs at various times and planning for repairs in the future, we know that we will continually need to look at alternatives, and that's something that we're certainly committed to. Cynthia mentioned earlier that, that we have met recently, that's the second meeting we've had this year, and we are certainly committed to continuing to explore how we can better manage traffic on the campus and, and the different possibilities and changes to how we do business to do that. I'll turn it back to John.
Two other concerns that were brought up in the July 23 meeting. One was, are we willing to agree to a conditional agreement, offering the streets back to the city if the certificate of need wasn't approved for some reason? In answer to that, yes. If that's, if that's important, we can do that. However, I do, I do want to mention, and I think we've made a good point, and the folks coming forward have made a good point of all the vehicular pedestrian conflicts we have with Kohler, and I think that there's still a good reason to close Kohler, even if this building project wasn't, wasn't going forward. But to answer the question, yes, we would be willing to give the streets back. Finally, there was a concern expressed or question expressed by the council about access to care for the community. You know, we're not for-profit organization, we provide care to everyone that comes regardless of their ability to pay. Just some statistics for you. In fiscal year 2006, our charity care, community care, we call it, at our cost was about $4.9 million, and it was about four thousand, over 4,000 people we served. In the fiscal year, we just, we just concluded fiscal year 2007, our community care, again, at our cost was 8.3 million, serving over 4,500 people. So you can see from those numbers, we're certainly providing a lot of, of community care to the, to the community. Want to be sure that, that addresses your question. If there's something more about access or community care that you want to know about, please let us know. So I guess at this point, we'd like to open it up if you had any questions for us in the stuff we presented to answer your questions from last time.
Yeah. First off, thank you very much for the detailed fly-through about the pedestrian and bike issues. That is what I want to ask about. It's my biggest concern if this moves ahead, is how that's handled. I really appreciate the responsiveness here. First, one of the questions, there were, there were five people of the, I think, fifteen people who gave some public comment tonight. Five of them were talking explicitly about bike and ped connection, and one of them used the phrase "complete streets." First, I wanted to ask about the commitment to keep that bike or ped connection open in the future. I, I guess we could move forward with the street vacation, and you could, you know, say, build this plan now, but what if in two years you decided, well, this isn't working, we want to close off the campus further, and we don't want that ped or bike access from north to south through the campus? I think somehow, if I were to support this, we'd need to have some commitment that that would stay open in perpetuity. I think it's really important that pedestrians and cyclists be able to always cross that area, even if the city didn't have any ownership of the streets there. Is that something you've at all discussed?
I think that's a, that's a reasonable request that we could put in the agreement, subject to if there was something unforeseen, that we would come back and get your approval at that point.
Yeah.
But I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay.
We'd be fine to put that in the agreement.
I think that would be great. About the, the detailed design of it, and I don't know, Paul, maybe you're the best person to answer these questions, but I'll let you decide. One thing I wondered was about the, the path along the south, along the Loop Road that would go along the railroad tracks for now. I couldn't tell if, if in the diagram, there was two-way bike and ped traffic, both on the, on the south side of the street, such that the bikes would be going both ways, both east and west, some of them counter to the traffic, all on that south side of the street? Was that the way it was intended, and could you talk a bit about that design?
We have, we just only have so much property between the existing parking structure and the railroad right-of-way. And as I mentioned, we have room for a, a total of eight feet for pedestrians and cyclists along there. What was depicted in the diagram was a, three feet of that is, is already constructed as a sidewalk right behind the curb, and in that diagram, we're proposing five feet in the roadway. So obviously, if it's five feet, that would be, that would be one-way traffic. But we have the eight feet to work with in there, so we would certainly, we could look at, we could look at alternative patterns, but right now, it's indicated as being on the south side of the road, because there are drives that go into the parking garage on the north side. So we're trying to minimize the conflicts between the pedestrians and the cyclists and the vehicles. So by keeping it all on the south side, we really have no crossings of, of driveways, which is why we would like to put it all on the south side of that drive, of that Loop Road.
Okay. That piece makes sense. I guess I would just maybe urge a little further consideration. I know I could, just for your information, that there's been a lot of work in different parts of town to get rid of the counter-traffic bike paths that are both on the same side of the street, because it really makes turning movements kind of confusing, and I think a lot of studies show there's a higher risk of injury when bikes are going in opposite direction right up against car traffic that might be going, say, eastbound on the, on the south side of that street. So, so that's one detail that I see that just looks like the kind of thing we were actually trying to change away from in some of the city's bike plans. That was, that was my, my only engineering concern in it, and the, the conditionality of some sort of agreement that this, this connection could stay open, to me, is really important, so I thank you for that. Thanks.
Anybody else? Charlie? Last time you had eleven, do you have eleven?
I have the, I have the two plus one that I have come up with since then. Two left over from last time. I only asked nine last time.
Oh. You said you had eleven, right?
I had eleven, but I only asked nine. To extend, to extend Brandon's discussion here, the, the eight-foot multi-use path, when, when there's no roadway, is, is, is good. But as somebody who primarily gets around by bicycle all over, all over the community, I'll go on the road first, because it's smoother, clearer, and I don't conflict with pedestrians, and I much prefer to take my chances with cars, because I behave like a car. And so I think a lot of bicyclists are going to use the road as much as they can, and then move to the path when they have to. You know, so the path, you have to between, you know, if you, if you, you need to get from, from Park to Church, you're gonna use the path, and that, that makes sense. You know, you turn onto there. Wherever you can, I would encourage you to, to, to design so that the, the movement for a cyclist is natural and encourages them to stay on the, on the, on the path that you want them to. And so, you know, I'm a little nervous about the five-foot path that has you going against traffic. You know, I can tell you right there, I'm, you know, I'm gonna come across, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna come with cars coming around. As long as I'm moving with the cars, I'm gonna be on the car side, not with the bikes. And, and if you know, you know, it, it may be better to just let the bikes be on the car, especially on the south side of the garage. It might be better just to let, let the bikes be with the cars, and, 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 you know, if you get the at-grade crossing, that'll be great. The ideal solution would be to be, to have a bike path that runs from, from Kohler all the way to downtown on the north side of those tracks. I mean, that would be the ideal thing. When you've got one train that runs on that, on that track a week or something like that, it's a real waste of space, and, and so, so that, that's my concern with the design. So, but I, I appreciate the fact that you've gotten a lot further with this than last time. A general comment I have, and I realize you're the hospital, but when I was talking about access for care last time, I was concerned with the loss of primary care, you know, being able to just go to my doctor here, which is walking distance to a big portion of the community. And if the clinic is gonna move all of its operations to two locations, one in the north part of Champaign and one in the southeast part of Urbana, they really force people to get in their cars a lot. Now, some of us aren't going to be intimidated by having a three- or four-mile bike ride, but if you don't feel well, you know, it's one thing to walk eight blocks or ride eight blocks, it's another thing to ride three miles. I mean, I've gone to surgical appointments by bicycle. Yes, I have. I don't go home that way, but I do go there in the morning that way. I will walk to the, you know, I'll walk to the clinic and, you know, get a ride home later or whatever. But, you know, so it's, it's convenient. I mean, I live on Kohler Avenue to the south of this, and it's ten blocks, and it's easy to get to, and it's very convenient, and I don't have to worry about parking, because I, I park my bike when I can find a parking spot for the bike, and I don't have to chain it to a, a bench, you know, which is what we have to do these days under construction. I understand that. So, so, you know, my, my, my ask, my, my comment here is that I would ask you to encourage the clinic to keep some primary care presence in the campus. And I realize you're under parking pressure, and that's one way to, you know, to create parking is to chase them all away, but I think that's a disservice to that part of, that whole part of our communities. Finally, in, in the, the one question I didn't get to ask last time, I- Finally, in the one question I didn't get to ask last time, I think is very important, very relevant here, and you put it in one of your statements, is that you will work to do replacement housing. And I think that's a big concern of the neighborhood. What exactly do you have in mind here?
And when we say that, you know, again, we anticipate after this that we'll still want to continue to talk about our future growth. And that would be, what do we do about expanding beyond the MIC at some point? I think the concern about expanding beyond the MIC is taking down houses. And, you know, what we're talking about is, you know, at some point in the future, if we can come to an agreement to expand the MIC, we are willing to work with city and the neighbors to be part of the solution for replacement housing. Really don't know what that means yet because we really haven't begun that process to discuss that.
What about the comment that was made earlier about disconnecting the neighborhood from Crystal Lake Park? I mean, you know, I can see that attraction. You've got about 40 houses that are right up against the park. Boy, I know, you know, for other neighborhoods, when you know, when your house looks over a park, you know, it's a prime piece of real estate. It's wonderful to have a park across the street. But, you know, your primary targeted area, you know, removes 40 houses from right next to the park.
Right.
And puts a, you know, a commercial, essentially a commercial facility next to the park. That is one aspect of all this that isn't real attractive.
Right. And again, the street closures, we won't be able to do that. For us to do that, we would have to move forward with some agreement to expand the MIC. And I think that's when we've got to get into talking about those details. At this point, obviously, this plan doesn't address any of that.
Robert or Mayor? Any questions? Robert? No? Wow. Go ahead, Brandon.
So at this point, I have a few questions for Bill, and then I'd make a motion that we would ask him to bring some of the stuff forward. But before I do, Bill, I just wanted to know from you a bit about the issue of the conditions, the sort of, if the certificate of need were not awarded by the state, the issue of Urbana somehow getting back or retaining ownership of the streets. Do you have everything you need or have the right legal ability to write up the ordinances in such a way that that condition could work?
I think we do. And with Mr. Schneider's concurrence of that sort of condition, we could incorporate that into the whereas's or the details of the ordinance. I guess I just envisioned that a council vote would be taken, and let's assume for a moment it's positive that you want the vacation, at least those two streets anyway. It would then, the finality of that would not occur until we hear they have a certificate of need. And I think that could be clearly written into the ordinance. And then, obviously, there'd be cash payment for the vacations and those sorts of things. But it would be an approval contingent on that certificate of need being secured and receipt of payment, of course.
And we probably need to look in the details. I think we actually have to have legal deed to the property, so we may have to probably buy it, and then with the agreement of, if it doesn't go through, we resell it back.
Okay.
Something like that.
But to answer your question, I think, you know, that and a few of these other comments about the bike path matter and whatever, we could incorporate that into an ordinance.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I agree. That second part is important, too, to me, that the city somehow has some agreement that there is connectivity. I think for pets and bikes, it's really hard to go around the whole campus. And so, we would want to have an agreement that people could always have a way to get through. Yeah?
I guess I have a question for Carl, and it is, in order to give council, give us the staff direction, we need to know truly what is your request this evening with respect to vacation of streets? Do you want us to just consider the two streets that are most critical? Or postpone the Bucie and the West Park at some later time? Or keep me informed between now and September on what the status of an agreement may be with these private property owners?
I mean, if you need to know tonight, then I would say we need to go with the ones that are most critical.
Okay.
Because we don't, but, you know, I think within a week, we would know the others. So depending on your time, Bill, what you need.
Okay. And I think committee members need to know that in order to give staff direction as to what you want us to proceed with an ordinance on and what don't you.
Well, given that if it's okay, I guess I would make a motion, actually, that we prepare the ordinances for each of the vacations. And then, of course, depending on what you hear from Carl and what happens in terms of the other owners agreeing to it, we would only bring forward those that make sense given those conditions on September 4th. So I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to prepare the ordinances for vacating the streets and alleys so that we could bring them back to City Council September 4.
Is there a second to that motion? I would second that motion. Charlie?
Well, I sort of envisioned this being done in sort of three pieces. We have, and I raised the issue of alleyways earlier, the two alleys that are just completely separate from all of this. To me, it strikes me that we can just do those like we would do any other alley vacation, that those are wholly surrounded by Carl and, you know, just, there's no need for the city to maintain, you know, have to take care of them when they serve and function only for Carl as a business, as long as we have the appropriate easements. The second piece is, of course, the, and the conditional aspects that you've associated with them and that I've been asking for, is the two blocks of Kohler and the one block of Park that are needed to proceed forward with the application to the state. I think that's understandable, you know, if there's a certain deadline there, you know, I'm willing to accommodate that. The piece that I'm not willing to move forward on is the rest of the vacations without understanding the complete aspect, or the complete Carl master plan in combination with the neighborhood master plan. And I think that we can find a compromised position here between the neighborhood and Carl's needs and the city's needs by doing it in these three pieces. That's just, that's how I feel. And I would prefer a motion that, you know, or action that reflected that. Though I think maybe this motion, if you just have, you know, there's seven vacations here and seven ordinances, you know, it's sort of lump, you can lump them that way. And if that's how we want to proceed, then that's fine with me. But I won't support anything beyond the first two parts of what I just said until we get the neighborhood and Crystal Lake Park planning process further along.
Brandon?
And Bill, could these be written as seven separate ordinances or at least split out that way so that when we have two more members, we'll really know how the votes might fall? We could do some or all?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So do you want to withdraw your motion?
So I guess I'd like to keep the motion that we asked staff to bring all of those, if it's seven, or all of these vacation ordinances forward so we at least have language to look at for September 4th. As separate ordinances, so that's fine with me so that at that time, we can discuss and see, you know, given all the facts at that point, what makes sense.
And I would second that motion. I, yeah. Okay. Well, then, is there any more discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries, so we'll see something September 4th.
I had a quick question. Is there any reason we couldn't see this back in committee before then so that we can, we meet again as a committee in two weeks, right?
Do we?
Actually, we don't.
I don't.
Unless there's some, unless you really want to, we've canceled the meeting for the 20th and the 27th.
Oh, okay.
If you feel it's important, we can do it.
No, I'll take the vacation.
Well, before you gentlemen leave, I just want to tell you that I am in position, in support of Carl's position on this. But as a citizen of Urbana, I just want to tell you that I think that even people who are opposed to this can't say that you guys haven't done more than beyond your call of duty. And I really, really, really appreciate that. So keep up the good work. And to all the staff members of Carl Clinic and Carl Hospital that are here, thank you so much for your great care. To all the people who come to your facility, I've had great care there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we're going to move on to item number six, sustainable Urbana report from Public Works. Don't worry about it. Thanks.
All the staff fall asleep yet?
So this is Public Works. Charlie?
Just as we go into this, I'd like to thank all the staff work that went into this. This is substantial and goes a long way towards what, you know, what we're trying to do. So it's a great start. Thank you.
Here, here.
Take it away, Bill.
First of all, I thought it'd be appropriate to wear something green this evening, so that's not, yeah, I, to echo that, your staff in virtually every department's had a lot to contribute here. And maybe we could do a little better with editoring, editing the contents here. But for our first report, I think it's a very impressive look as to what the various departments in the city do do. And I think we've had a sustainable mindset for actually many years in many areas. But I think the focus in more recent years is coming to a state and national level, and it's kind of reinforcing what we have done in many instances in the past, but I think what we really need to continue to do in the future. And some of them will take a significant effort of perhaps, you know, money, time, staff, what have you, as I mentioned in the cover memo. But this evening, I wasn't going to go through this page by page at all, but I thought it was important to at least have some key staff members here to help get into some of those maybe more technical questions, concerns you might have. I also envisioned this being an ongoing dialogue. I mean, tonight's the last, isn't going to be the last time we talk about this either. And perhaps in future meetings, we have a more focused effort. Perhaps you might want to spend one evening and talk about zero waste or something, and Rod and myself and others can, and maybe, it's really, no pun intended, but zero in on that particular, you know, item or something. But, so I wasn't quite sure how you wanted to proceed, but community developments and fire and finance, police, everybody had some hand in this matter. And I think we're proud of what we've done, our accomplishments. We know there's more things that can be done. We just placed an order for two Ford Focus vehicles for our parking staff, you know, which is a more environmentally friendly type of vehicle. And we know we'd like to do that in the future, and we have an eye on that type of situation, too. And so, anyway, I'll stop and kind of listen to what your thoughts are and where you would like to see us proceed in the future.
Charlie? I'm waiting for your hand to go up.
Well, there's a lot to chew on here, and it's hard to figure out exactly where to I guess, you know, to me, one of the best things is for the city to lead by example. But I think it's probably too early to talk about what the city can actually do to its own buildings. You know, you talked about some little things. I'm thinking about some of the bigger things like, you know, can, you know, you're still looking at solar cells. And, you know, I'd never thought about the issue of doing solar cells as covered parking sort of situation, which is, sounds pretty good. We talked about wind turbines here, and one thought that came to mind, I just saw a conflict in another community, I think in New Jersey, where a gentleman built, he put solar panels on his roof, and he has a fairly small 35-foot-high, I think, wind turbine. And the city, the Neighborhood Association or whatever is on his case about the turbine, and he's had to turn the turbine off, which is a real shame. You know, with some of the winds that we get around here, I'd love to have a turbine up, but, you know, given the 70-foot-tall trees, it'd probably have to be an 80-foot-tall turbine, which probably be fairly difficult to build. But he had one that was only, you know, just a little bit taller than his house. And I think that people that can do that should be encouraged. And I don't know where that exactly fits in here, though we mentioned it in the zoning, and it sounds like it's generally allowed. We're looking at these biodiesel blends. Is there any way, or should we be looking at doing a biodiesel plant of our own in conjunction with Champaign and the MTD and anybody else who would want to get in on that? You know, a little bit bigger, a bigger concept. I'm trying to find where the stuff on, how far are we? I guess, I don't know, who's looking at, you know, how much can we do on our own roofs here in the library and any of our buildings? Is it too soon to talk about that?
Sorry, it's re-roofs.
Re-roofs and stuff, yeah. I'm trying to find where that section was here.
If Pat, when mine, Pat's looked into that, so with this facility and the library, and he could address that.
As you might imagine, these buildings weren't designed or constructed with anything like that in mind. Neither was the original portion of the library. Just to take you back in history a little bit, you recall, we went through some leads analysis of that project, but it wasn't really time for success. It was after the project was designed and bid and essentially underway that we really started looking at what we could, what we could do to pick up leads points, for instance, and that. And we did switch from a, in the re-roof portion, switched from a black membrane to a white membrane, a white GPO membrane. Where, as a matter of fact, as we speak, literally putting a new roof on this building, we had a structural analysis done to see if vegetated roof was possible. We found out that one was technically possible but not sustainable, for lack of a better word. So we made a similar decision, go to a white membrane on this building. However, we also did a structural analysis on the Urbana Civic Center and on the main fire station, and found out that those roofs structurally will support the weight of a vegetated roof. So those are two real opportunities for the future. It's unfortunate with the gypsum deck we have in this building and the bar joist construction just won't support a lot of weight. So we did go through that analysis, and that didn't make it to this, unfortunately, just final version. The other thing I should point out is, since the building maintenance stuff is on top, this is really just a snapshot of what we've done in the last several weeks or a few months. It's not a historical view of, you know, all the things we've done. A good example of that would be when we did the infill project on this building, when we went into 1960s vintage buildings and cut windows in where they didn't previously exist, and we beefed up the insulation, we did all that sort of thing. So this isn't meant to be all-encompassing by any means. These are just fairly recent things that we've identified.
So as I read this, I see, you know, accomplishments and opportunities. How do we, you know, I guess the opportunities, you know, a lot of them are very attractive. Do we just simply, as, you know, say, when the roof of the, or at some point, we need to do an analysis of the roof of the Civic Center or the fire station, at what point do we consider, you know, adding that green roof? When is it, do we direct you to do some cost-benefit analyses now or later? How do we work these opportunities into city planning in the next few years?
Well, I think, Pat and I talked about that very thing, and it's when it's time, actually, for that roof to be replaced is the point. I don't think we should necessarily do it prematurely. I mean, you know, give or take a year or so. But I think both those facilities have some life left in the existing roof. But when it's coming time to change it out, that's when we would give it very serious consideration to do a vegetated roof versus just replacing it in kind or some other, you know, membrane-type roof. So it wasn't the intent of next year, we're going to do this, but in its plan, if you will, let it go through its typical life and then replace.
Yeah. As somebody who's currently struggling with the idea of a tankless water heater, you know, my water heater needs to be replaced soon. Is this, again, a cost-benefit analysis that we, you know, figure out, you know, we've got some, some I would imagine we could accelerate because there are some savings here to be had. But, you know, so is staff going to take some of this and add that cost-benefit analysis and start working it into our city budget?
An item like that, for instance, some things, even though going to An item like that, for instance, some things, even though going to a tankless water heater is more expensive than a conventional replacement, it's not as significant a budget issue as a new roof on a building. So it's not the same planning process. The same planning process isn't involved, those smaller ticket items, even though they're not inexpensive or more easily managed than a new roof on a building, which is, you know, tens of thousands of dollars compared to three to $4,000. But yeah, it is part of the cost benefit analysis.
I guess, let me just add one last thing. This is then, as we look and look through this and discuss this, I guess I'm still trying to figure out how to work this into city planning. You know, is, do we go through and say, oh, we like X, Y, and Z, we don't like R, you know, which, how do we pick and choose from this menu you've given us here? You know, I like almost all of it. You know, I'd like to see all of it done, but you know, is that, you know, we say, okay, just do this over the next 10 or 20 years, or do as much of this as works into city policy? How do we make this come to be? That's the guidance I'm looking for here.
Bill?
Well, we have to be careful because we can't be all things to all people here, so we're going to have to pick and choose. I mean, obviously, and maybe I would suggest that perhaps the collective departments and managers within the departments, we could perhaps prioritize and tell you what we think, you know, might be under, you know, opportunities, would might make a lot of sense, I think. And we're always mindful to the budget, we're always mindful to workloads, and quite frankly, some of these items would really require more staff. I mean, if we really wanted to get into some, you know, very, into a few of these matters here. So I think it's a combination of things. If, as a council and perhaps at a caucus type meeting, there's a collective, like, boy, these three items really jump out at us, we think we'd like to see you do that, that's great. But I think I'm first to say, we can't do all these opportunities, there's no way. So, I mean, we can maybe help prioritize and be happy to try and do that. And some of these, we could say, hey, we can click some of these off in three months or six months or nine months. But there's some in here that are very significant and aren't going to get done in the next two years for a chance. But we thought we'd give you a very broad landscape of where we are. You know, I've, in the last year or two, there's been a lot of articles in the journals I receive, and, you know, kind of cookbook style, I kind of read through, and I go, yep, yep, we're kind of right there, we've got those listed, too. So we're not too far off as to what maybe other towns do. But again, we can't be all things to all communities, just because a town in New Jersey does this and California does that, we can't, we can't do it all. So I think it's, you know, we have to all prioritize, and maybe it's a combination of maybe a couple council members and a couple staff members getting together in a meeting and talking about it. That sort of thing might be fine, but I thought, lacking any more specific direction, you know, give you a 30-page report, and let's, you know, pare it down as far as a plan of action from there, but we can't do it all.
Mayor, and then Lynn, and then Robert.
This is really a very impressive report. I really thank you for it. We have a lot of creative thinkers, obviously, working for the city. And I talked to Brandon earlier today about how are we going to deal with this. This is so, so much material that I think it's going to take quite a while for us to go through it. But if the staff could prioritize, that would be a wonderful start. I just have one small question. I haven't really, obviously, been able to read this whole thing. But on page 11, we were talking about permeable pavements, and you list as one of the challenges that prevalent area soil types make use of permeable pavements problematic. That uses a lot of Ps in the one sentence there, but what kind of soils are you talking about that make this difficult?
Well, a lot of our soils, we've got great 12, 18 inches, a great topsoil that grows corn and beans fantastic. But once you get past that, you get into some clays that are very impermeable types of soils, and they don't allow good percolation of water. It's like a barrier almost. So those are some challenges in certain parts of the community. Short of digging that out and adding, you know, stone or a different kind of matrix that can allow, you know, water percolation, that's a challenge that we have.
I guess if, like, if you have a driveway that's not paved, just has rocks on it, for example, and you wanted to put a permeable pavement on it, would that be any different from just having the rocks? Because you have the same soil.
If you're, it depends on, you know, it depends on a lot of circumstances. But if you've got a lot of dirt, if you will, you know, not clay right underneath that, then that would probably work just fine.
Okay, but I guess my question was, what difference does it make if you just have it unpaved right now? Because the water's going to be treated the same way, it's going to go down, and it's going to hit the clay. So would it make a real negative impact to put a permeable paving thing on top instead of having it unpaved?
For a driveway, residential driveway, that'd be fine. I mean, for a street, parking aisle, whatever, we have heavy traffic situation, it may not support it.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn?
I like the idea of staff doing some further work in terms of prioritizing these ideas, and then us sitting in caucus and discussing them, much like we did our council goals. That was a pretty effective way to come up with some priorities.
Of course, it might be interesting for us to do it independently of staff first and see how they meet.
I just want to thank you. This is pretty interesting stuff. And one thing that I thought about, and I want to thank you for the critical look at it. But when it comes to building maintenance, and I think we have quite a few buildings, and I think some of them are quite old. And as we look down the line or in the future, a critical look or an energy audit on each building would be helpful. I don't know if we have staff that can do that. We had it done.
Pat can talk to that, because we did start that process.
We did. In fact, we have a recently completed diagram version over here, an energy use audit, that we hired the University of Illinois to do, the, actually, Illinois Waste Management and Research Center in Champaign, they performed an audit of energy usage in all of our buildings. And it's a good starting point, it's not a, you know, it's not a magic wand, but it gives us an area to look, and it ties in actually very closely to, the question's been raised earlier, and that is, you know, what's the top priority? Our energy usage plays out differently than the energy that we pay for. So the fiscal impact is different than the usage impact because of the franchise agreement primarily. So, for instance, we use a lot of natural gas, we don't pay very much money for natural gas, we pay a great deal of money for electricity. That would indicate, from a capital point of view, a fiscal point of view, that you tackle the electricity first.
Sure.
Which may not be the easiest of the two to tackle, but it would save the most money the soonest.
I understand. One of the things that I've seen in development and maybe down the line, is a lot of companies, for example, are producing equipment that are certified. And if you, you probably recognize that boilers in the past never, as they grow older, they become less efficient. But now, with the new technology and the methods they're using for boilers and stuff like that, they're guaranteeing the performance levels that you get over a timeframe. And it would behoove the city to go move towards those certification-type equipment. So in the long run, you really save energy over time. As you phase into a changeover, for example, that would be something to look into. For example, that same thing would apply for even cooling systems as well.
Certainly, we do that at replacement times, when those come up, either through a construction project or just through the lifecycle of a particular piece of equipment. The difference in this, or the challenge in this, is when does it make sense to do that out of cycle because of the payback or because of other gains? Whether, you know, perhaps it's just the right thing to do, so we would accelerate the replacement. But that is all part of the analysis. One thing for certain is, not only have they gotten more efficient, they've gotten much smaller.
I understand. Less space.
Yeah, quite a bit less space.
And that would make space for other things.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Brandon?
Yeah, I wanted to thank all the staff. We have a lot of people here who worked on this. It's really clear that a lot of effort went into it. When I made this motion three months ago, that we asked staff to bring back a report in three months, I really did not expect so much detail and so much valuable stuff. I, you know, I know what Urbana's done, more or less, but there are accomplishments in here that I didn't know we'd done, and there are opportunities in here that I hadn't thought of yet, and that are really, as the mayor said, really creative and helpful. I think the most important thing is to figure out a process of how to move ahead. And I think you're right, it's not, council's not the best body to really sit here and deliberate and say, well, okay, page one, item numbers one and two, page two, item numbers three and four. Really, I think the role of the council would be to help put in place a process over time, because this is a process, it's just not a one-night event, to be able to monitor our success and our progress, and to set criteria to help staff or help a smaller group of people choose which actual detailed things we would do. So I would say, in terms of the criteria that I think are important in picking which of these we go ahead with, it's really clear we should obviously continue the ones that are in progress, but also pick the ones that save us money. You know, if over five or over 10 years, a green roof actually saves Urbana taxpayers' money, then we should be doing those things that save money. And the ones that save the most kilowatt hours, or the most gallons of fuel, or tons of carbon emissions, are also the ones that we should prioritize by, you know, sort of how much impact they would have in reducing our environmental footprint. So to me, those are the kind of criteria that the council could help sort of set, to help us think about, you know, okay, which of these really do meet that? Which of these do save money or save the most fuel or energy, especially in this era of rising gas costs, rising electrical costs? I also think it's important to have some kind of periodic process to review it, some way of, maybe it's a once-a-year report, being able to say, okay, in this last year, the things we did did save us this much energy, this much gas. These are the goals that we've completed in this last year, and here are the ones that we would hope to do in the next year. So I think that kind of process, where with some criteria and some ways to measure ourselves going forward, is the kind of system we could put in place to see that, that over time, we're choosing the right things to do, and we're doing the things that are kind of the low-hanging fruit, that are going to get us all the most benefit and save people in Urbana the most money, and bring the most reduction in environmental footprint. So it's that kind of process that I think would be valuable, and I'd kind of like to hear from other council members, if those criteria make sense, if that kind of monitoring over time is something that people are interested in.
Robert?
Yeah, we have some, have you been monitoring our national goals relative to energy conservation? Our national goals relative to energy conservation?
Have I been monitoring?
Our national goals, like the plan that we have, you know, in place to reduce admissions, and are we in line kind of with that? Or, you know, would we meet the 20, the 20, 30 goals, that kind of thing? And carbon admission and those kinds of things? If we implement some of these things, will it assist in that overall, not national, but global plan? Will it do that?
I think the answer's yes. And I know our fleet manager's component in here, too. There's some challenges, again, looking at the vehicles that we look at replacing in the future is helpful. Also a challenge, I think, for each department to look at ways to reduce, you know, gasoline or fuel, you know, consumption. I think, I think this report and your interest in sustainability, in my mind, is a good measure for all city staff members to be thinking more in these terms, you know, whether it's, you know, idling issues, or turning out the light when they leave the room, or whatever it might be, where we may not have had that mindset in the past. I think now we're kind of trying to focus on those things. And I know I, for one, in our fall department meeting, where we have a staff of 80 people in a room, I'd like to talk about sustainability, and what can we do more in public works and challenge, and maybe even have a little awards or prizes for ideas, like we do with safety IGA's. So I think it's, I think by this request by council members to look into this, A, we know that, well, you're interested in it, which helps support us and as department heads to, hey, there's an interest here, and not only globally and nationally and worldwide is this important, but even at the local level, and we've tried to make this a local type report. So, you know, we're mindful of maybe what these greater goals might be. I know Rod, in the, you know, the waste component of this report spent a lot of time and effort, and summarized a recent survey and such. And, you know, that area, we could spend a lot of time and a lot of efforts in staff if you really want to get into a zero-waste situation, you know? And I was just talking to my niece over the weekend, who got back from New Zealand, and it's kind of eye-opening as to what New Zealanders do as far as, you know, just every drop of water, you know, is conserved, you know, and reused and reused and reused, you know, and all aspects of their everyday living. And I think there's some things that we can learn as Americans, what other countries have been doing for a long time. So, I don't know if it's a long, one in answer to your question, but I think.
I think the mindset is critical, and I think that, the reason I raise it is because if you're going to set goals and try to set priorities, I think one priority would be to have the mindset towards this kind of stability. And then also to, once that mindset is there, it's easily, easy to come forward to what is important and what is not important. And, but the also, the reality of the situation is, which ones will give you the greatest amount of impact immediately in comparison? Like, you've just invested in equipment in the library, for example, that's not very efficient, but you had to do it because of the timeframe. In 20 years, what do you do? You know, do you do something ahead of schedule or not ahead of schedule, or whatever? Yeah, those are factors.
Lynn?
I like Brandon's ideas of, I think, the criteria that you talked about, and I think that gives staff direction to come back, maybe to us, either in a committee meeting or in a caucus, either way, to kind of discuss what you all think makes a lot of sense in terms of prioritization. And then we could even have our annual update during the month of Earth Day, so we remember, you know, that, oh, it's March, is it March or April?
May.
April? I don't know, whatever, whatever the month is, that would be a good month. We could all wear green shirts, you know, kind of go with Bill's theme here. And, but I like the idea of an annual check and see what I've accomplished, but without the council getting the minutia of it, but to give more just general direction, and I think you're right, I mean, when there's a mindset of what the council's goals are and priorities are, it obviously directs staff.
Charlie?
Well, a third of this report is the waste and recycling stuff at the back third. And it doesn't quite fit in with stuff the city is doing, because to do some of this, we're going to have to work in the private sector, work with the private sector. So some of this stuff's probably going to, you know, I think the next step here is probably to get a neighborhood meeting of affected people, maybe by sections of the city or whatever. You know, you might have a meeting out of Sunny Crest to deal with issues out there. Clearly downtown can be defined as another area, different business things. And I think it's something I can probably, I have a personal interest in this, and I'm willing to tackle it with Rod, to see how we can move forward on some of the things that are in here. But to me, there's, you know, moving towards a zero-waste is a goal. I'd love to see us be able to adopt, but it's going to take a lot of work, but it's going to take a commitment from more than just city government to do.
Brandon?
Yeah, since the zero-waste piece was such a big piece of the report, and since Rod and a number of people are here, I don't know if you, Bill wanted to just take one to two minutes and briefly kind of just define the zero-city piece for us, to give us all sort of the picture of what that term even means. Rod, would you be willing to come do that? I know, yeah. I know it's on the spot, but just a really brief summary, you had so many good details here of what is a zero-waste city and what are the kind of things you found?
Well, as previously mentioned, New Zealand is a world leader in zero-waste, and other areas of the world who do not have the financial wherewithal and/or environmental abilities to be such consumers as we are here in America. Zero-waste really is just a strategy that basically puts everything into alignment, not only just from the waste generation and resource management and.
not only just from the waste generation and resource management, and, but it also extends to producer responsibilities, i.e., manufacturers who manufacture products, and their responsibility to not only design them in a more environmentally safe manner, to make them easier, for instance, to recycle, use less hazardous materials in their, in their construction, and it is a big bite to chew. There are groups who are working toward that environmental producer responsibility issue. It's hard for an individual city per se to really get involved in that to a large degree, but a lot of states are moving in that direction. The federal government, of course, is very slow, we never did sign the Kyoto Protocol, so we're not a party to that, nor the Basel Convention, but, but I think we can, aside from those big-picture worldly perspectives and issues, I certainly do think that there are things that we can do here in Urbana that will make things, or make our residents and our businesses and government entities more on a sustainable track in terms of use and consideration of our resources. So it is a large issue to tackle, and it takes time and resources to accomplish, and it will indeed be a work in progress, so. I hope that answered your questions, maybe.
Mayor?
Well, the U.S. Conference of Mayors did adopt the Kyoto standards, and I think it's, I don't know if we can achieve all these things, but I think it's important for the city to set a good example for businesses and for residences, and it's all part of an education, that it's not going to just be one group that gets this done, it's going to have to be a huge commitment, but you start it with education and setting a good example.
That's exactly right, I mean, you know, we all set goals, some of them are more easily attained than others. For instance, internally here, what's our worker, worker's compensation goal in terms of injuries? It's not five, it's not 10, it's zero.
Right.
So it's that philosophy of pushing yourself to the absolute limit. I mean, we'll never, as a practical matter, ever literally get to zero-waste, but we can get real close, and that's the, that's the change in the mindset that we need to communicate and reinforce, and it takes time.
Charlie?
Rod, one last thing, and I know you were working with some people on some legislative efforts in Springfield, how are those going?
Slow.
Charlie, it's time to ask like this.
But, but I hope we will be, this next spring session, I hope we will have some electronics legislation adopted, and there are some other issues out there as well, but electronics is kind of a focus right now.
You couldn't sneak it in as part of the budget?
No, good luck.
Well, is there, Brandon?
Yeah, one last comment. One of the most creative ideas I'd never even thought of, but that was really helpful, was that idea of having a drop-off point for that waste, that, you know, the recycling of electronics event, the hazardous, the household hazardous waste event, where people get to drop off their paints, or their, you know, bug spray, or their chemicals that they have at their house, only happens once every couple of years, and the idea of a drop-off point for that that would be consistent, I think would be really helpful. You wouldn't know the number of, well, you probably do, because lots of these things I refer to you, you wouldn't believe the number of calls we all get from people who say, "Ah, I'm moving," or "I moved in," or "I moved out," or "I have this old can of yuck in the garage, and now I have kids, and I don't want them to trip over it and open it, it's, you know, some old kind of poison or something, how do I safely get rid of it?" And that's just a perennial problem that, that I know you are aware of, because you get the calls, too, and that was a really creative idea that I think would be wonderful, if we could have a drop-off point where we collect the stuff, and when there are then the right opportunities to dispose of it, we dispose of it. So thank you for that suggestion.
We have several other staff members here, did anybody else have any presentations for us, or?
I made them available in case you had questions, would have you, but we talk about trees, vehicles, engineering issues, and the primary author, the person who put this together is staff member Barb Steele, and so she can gather a lot of data and information, too, so. But if I'm hearing correctly, we can go back respectively and think this through, and let you know what we think is, what we can accomplish over the next, whatever, six, 12 months, an annual update, Earth Day, or whatever update, you know, that's fine, I think we can certainly do that, but I didn't want to give you the impression that under all these, or all these challenges, excuse me, opportunities, that this was something that's been done next week, or whatever, so, yeah, they're all challenges.
Charlie?
I would hope that, you know, and a lot of work has gone into this, and we really appreciate it, and I think it's more, not what we can do in six to 12 months, but what we can do in one year, two years, five years, 10 years, you know, there's a lot of mindset and education that's involved, and to me, it's a long-term process, and I'm more interested in getting down some of these paths and setting some goals, and trying to get there over time, so. Now, that's my own take on this, and I think this is a great document to direct us in that kind of way of thinking.
Brandon?
Yeah, do you have any examples, Bill, of how other cities have, for example, all the, what, 400-plus cities who signed on to that U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement and agreed to the Kyoto Protocol targets for reducing carbon emissions? Do you have any sense of how other cities are tracking their progress? It's really hard with some of the things to quantify, you know, how much energy all the homes in Urbana use? Well, we don't really know, the power company knows. How much gas do we all buy? Well, maybe we could go by, you know, by sales tax receipts and try to figure it out. Do you have some examples of how all the other cities that are trying to measure against these targets are getting the data and able to present it in some annual or consistent way to know if we're hitting them, and know by what year we might be able to meet the first Kyoto step in lowering our emissions?
I think that's something we have to research, I know, Barb, do you have anything to add, or?
I guess Chicago was one, that they started to measure their emissions, their carbon emissions, they found out they weren't as successful as they thought they were, so that was one thing that they started measuring, and they found out that after they started their, their plan to be green, that it wasn't really as effective as they initially thought that they would be. So, I don't know, I think that they're still continuing, it's not that they've thrown up their hands and saying, "Oh, my gosh, we failed in this, and we're going to stop," but it's maybe not as easy as they initially thought when they came up with all these plans, and the plan that we have kind of mirrors some of the topics that they looked at in the city of Chicago, so. I mean, it's just, like Mr. Smythe said, it's something that we're going to just have to continually educate and not give up on, just be persistent. I didn't really answer your question, but anyway, some places are trying to measure.
Well, this is obviously a collaborative effort, based on the number of staff that are here, and I appreciate all the effort that all of you, and I'm sure the staff that are not here, have put into this, and, did you want to?
Is this report available to the public?
Bill says yes, he's shaking, is that yes?
It's on our website, it's part of the packet for tonight's meeting, on our website.
You can have-
I'm sitting here with a stranger, I don't know if it's an idea or what, or not, I wouldn't say exactly that, but I mean, we're talking about this great award, and that's great, but where is it?
Good question.
What we can do is, is put some links to it, and make sure it's in an easily accessible place on the web, and then put some links to it. I mean, I'll probably move a copy of it to my own website, for example, and we can-
You know, with organizations in town here, I would be very much interested in discussing this.
Yeah.
You know, that are interested in viral things, and so, you would need to be able to have an access to it, but.
Is there any other comments on sustainable Urbana? Okay, let's move on, thanks again to all you who are here, kudos to your hard work. Number seven is ordinance number 2007-08-094, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance, the City of Urbana, Illinois, regarding the rental registration program for residential property and a schedule of fees. Don't know who this is coming from.
Actually, Mr., my colleague Kurt Borman prepared this, but I think I have enough information that I'd be able to comment on this. There was an inconsistency between Section 15A of the Rental Registration and Inspection Program Ordinance, and it established a minimum fine of $135 for each violation, but the City of Urbana Schedule of Fees subsection B11 established a $100 fee for failure to register rental property, and $50 fees for late and incomplete registration, and so Kurt, Mr. Borman caught this inconsistency and realized that we needed to correct that, because obviously if someone were to be taken to city court, and there would be a finding of a violation, what fine would be assessed against them? Would it be $100 or $135? It's really, you know, basically that, that simple, so we needed to reconcile that, and that's the ordinance that you have before you now. We struck the failure to register, $100, failure to register fine, if you will, from the Schedule of Fees, and, let's see, I'm sorry, let me back up here for a moment. Yes, that's correct, it was a strike through for, from subsection B11E, the failure to register $100, and that would leave the $135 fine as to the rental registration ordinance.
I'd like to recommend that we move ordinance number 2007-08-094 on to council meeting with a motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Lynn and seconded by Robert, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. We're going to move on to resolution number 2007-08-018R, and we have Ron.
Okay, I'm going to try to make this as brief as I possibly can. There, there are two things that are going on with regard to our cable franchise. First, there is the issue, which we are not considering tonight, but there's the issue of renewing the franchise agreement with Insight, and that, that's going to come to a head in the next couple of years, and there's a lot going on with that, a lot of evaluations that are being done. We retained some responsible parties to do audits for the city in regards to customer service, certain technical audits, and also certain financial audits, but during the course of that process, an intervening event occurred, or an intervening action was taking place, in which the franchise agreement, it sought to be transferred from Insight, and I'm going to use the word Insight, there are a lot of different companies you're going to see in the report, you know, there's, let me turn to the correct page here. There are Insight Midwest, which is a partnership between essentially TCI of Indiana, which is Comcast, and Insight Communications Company, and then there's Insight Midwest Holdings and Insight Communications. So there are all these little subsidiaries, and to keep things simple, I'm just going to refer to it as Comcast and Insight, okay? And what has happened is, federal law provides that when a franchise holder wants to transfer its interests to another entity, that they make application to the city, which Insight and Comcast did, and we have, we, the City of Urbana, as well as the City of Champaign, have 120 days to respond. We were still in the process of meeting with Insight and Comcast representatives as recently as about a week and a half ago, to iron out some of the details of the resolution that would either, would, well, accept that, that transfer. Without getting too technical about it, the, our ordinance and our franchise agreement, as well as federal law, allows us to consider certain things, whether, when we're trying to determine whether or not we want to accept this transfer or not. There would be legal considerations, there would be technical considerations, and there would be some financial considerations, and essentially, we're allowed to evaluate whether or not the entity to which the franchise is being transferred is essentially a going concern, you know, whether technically, legally, and financially, they are someone who is appropriate, they're, they're an entity that is appropriate to accept this transfer. In this situation, and I'm going to try to simplify this as much as I can, there is a partnership between Insight and Comcast to run certain cable operations around the Midwest, and now they have decided that they are going to split up the holdings, and that Comcast is going to take certain markets, and Insight's going to take certain markets. Comcast wants to, is going to be one of the, is going to be the company that would be running the Champaign and Urbana market, and so they have made application to us, we need to respond, they have granted us graciously an extension of time, and they've given us to September 5th, which would allow City of Urbana time to pass this on for council action on the September 4th council meeting. Essentially, I'm going to give you a quick rundown. Legally, there hasn't, there isn't, there aren't really any issues. This report has been prepared by our consultant, his name is Brian Grogan, and he works for a consulting firm, Moss and Barnett, Barnett, he has an expertise, and he has been assisting us not only with this transfer request, but also with the franchise renewal process, and his, his insight and counsel have been invaluable to me, particularly as a new attorney for the city. Essentially, he has vetted these three areas, the application and has looked into these three different areas. Legally, there isn't really anything there that would prevent us from agreeing to this transfer. The law says that, that our consent to this transfer request will not be unreasonably denied or delayed, so we looked into, or rather, he looked into legally if there is anything in our review, if there's anything that would jump out that would suggest that we not agree to this. The only thing in his report that I've seen that's of any note, and it's really not anything that would cut against this transfer, is that Insight Midwest LP, which is who is going to be transferring their interests to Comcast, is not in good standing with the Delaware Secretary of State due to its failure to pay its Delaware franchise tax, but what do we care? You know, that's of no moment, as it pertains to the City of Urbana or the City of Champaign agreeing to transfer their interests to Comcast. So then we would move on to the, any of the, the technical considerations, qualifications, and Comcast is huge, I mean, they, Brian has noted here that they're the largest cable operator in, in the country, and they have 21.5 million cable customers in 35 states, so technically, they're capable of providing cable service to the City of Urbana and the City of Champaign. I could get into all of that technical stuff that he's, he has cited, too, but you can read that over for yourself. The, and then there's the financial issue, and again, this is Comcast, they have like a $5 million line of credit, of which 4.5 million, excuse me, let me make sure that I give you the correct number, excuse me, $5 billion dollar line of credit, of which $4.5 billion are available to them. If you, this is, they have generated $4.4 billion- If you, this is, they have generated $4.4 billion of net cash from the operations from the six-month period ended in June 30th of 2007. So in terms of their financial liquidity and their ability to fund infrastructure and operations within the City of Urbana, I think that they are capable and there is nothing there that would really preclude approval of the transfer to Comcast. Actually Comcast dwarfs Insight by comparison. The only issue that was really left on the table after our meeting of last week was part of the previous franchise agreement that we signed with them says that they will pay for our auditing if they want to transfer, they want to. And the secondary issue is when it comes time to actually do the renewal, they're not going to expect us to do all new audits of them. In other words, part of this resolution is going to state that the audits that we've already concluded, conducted with regard to Insight will be sufficient for purposes of Comcast. So they're not going to come in and say, "Well, you did all these audits of Insight, but those are not applicable to us as Comcast." So obviously, we don't want to undertake these processes all over. And when it comes time to make a presentation about the actual renewal, I can get into more detail with you about some of the auditing that we've done and what the, what those, what those have produced. Essentially, the, our consultant, Mr. Grogan, has recommended that we pass the resolution. So resolution states very clearly that Comcast will pay for our consulting services and whatever auditing services that we needed to conduct in consideration of this transfer agreement. And I would tend to concur.
Brandon and then Lynn.
Okay, a few basic questions.
Sure.
One of the biggest issues with Insight currently is the quality of the service and complaints. Obviously, there's some question about how quickly they're able to resolve all complaints and how often people's internet or something goes down. Do we have any understanding of whether Comcast will be a provider with a better complaint record, a better, better business bureau ranking, or some Consumer Reports ranking that would tell us that they might operate the system better and our customers would have fewer problems than they've had with Insight? Is that part of this report?
Well, it doesn't get necessarily into that. It got into more of does Comcast possess the technical abilities and infrastructure and money to be able to support a cable system? Presumably, that would involve also responding to customer complaints. And on that note, as part of our renewal process, the franchise renewal, one of the audits we're doing or have conducted is on customer service issues. So there will be information forthcoming in that report that will discuss that matter directly.
Okay. And would it, it would discuss both the history of Insight and Comcast as the new franchisee?
Well, presumably, as, in dealing with the renewal, whether we decide to renew the franchise agreement, we would be, you know, using that information and that would be part of the negotiation that we're going to be discussing these customer service issues. You want to renew this franchise agreement, then, you know, here are some things that we want to address and probably possibly have them make presentation as to how they would intend to address those if it in time.
Okay. And also the prices, the channels, the options people currently get here in Urbana. If we transferred the franchise to this new entity, that would have to stay the same, right? They couldn't change the price, they couldn't change the channels, they're bound as long as the current franchise lasts. Then when we get to renewal, obviously, we're discussing that with Comcast now instead of discussing it with Insight, but...
Sure. We don't anticipate the meeting that we had a week and a half ago. There was no anticipation of any loss of, of programming or quality. You know, if anything, it would be more, it'd be better. Comcast is bigger, it has more, it owns more. You know, there are some discussions that are ongoing though regarding, you know, I'm new to this technical issue, but as I understand it, you know, there's, there's only so much bandwidth and it's like a tube and the tube's not going to get any bigger. And so the question is how can you compress things more than even what's being done now to get more through there? And so, you know, that's an ongoing discussion with them to try to keep what we have and make it more efficient so that we can get more.
Okay. And my last question is, did House Bill 1500, I think that was the number, go anywhere? Are we, do we have a statewide franchise now that's really going to limit us?
Well, that's also part of the renewal discussion. Yes, it passed and the governor signed off on it. But it's not, it's not as bad as some, you know, some had some concerns about it, but it actually, we're in a good position. I think we're one of the only communities in, in the country that has a 5% and 2%, 5% fee that comes back to us, as well as a 2% for our PEG channels for infrastructure and improvement in that manner. And you all will have to forgive me because, you know, I'm the city's attorney. I don't understand all of the technical aspects. I wish there was someone else here that could, could get more into those issues. So I'm giving you a very limited scope in, in terms of what I know because I'm not a cable guy. I could just only address the legal issues. But just to let you know, there is a statewide franchise and the way this works is that a cable carrier can choose two different routes. They can either opt into the state statutory scheme and then basically, like we suspect that that's what AT&amp;T will do, or they can continue to negotiate if they would like individually with communities, which is at this time what it appears that Comcast will continue to do. So at least as far as Comcast goes, the indication, you can't etch this in stone, but the indication is that with Champaign and Urbana that they would, they would be wanting to continue to negotiate these individual agreements because part of the problem is if it's not broke, why would you want to go do something differently if they could just renew the agreements that we have?
Okay. Thank you.
Given that this resolution is probably pretty perfunctory and that we'll really
have the meat and potatoes of negotiation later, I recommend that we move resolution number 2007-08-081 on to council meeting with a recommendation for approval.
It's been motion by Lynn and seconded by Charlie. Is there any more discussion?
Quick question, Ron. So since we just got this tonight and haven't gotten through it all, is there a transition plan in place for the Insight customers to be moved from one system to the other? I mean, is that something that's understood? They've done it before?
Yes. You know what? I don't have specific knowledge of it, so I don't want to misrepresent an answer to you. Presumably, yes. And that is something that would be part of, I believe, our ongoing negotiation with them. I mean, Comcast is not new to doing this type of thing. They've done countless of these types of deals where they've taken over markets and, you know, we're very much concerned that there not be any loss of service quality. And right now, they're coming out, you know, August is obviously huge with all the students returning, but I anticipate that when this happens next year, there won't be, there won't be a big deal.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. No, Charlie? I just had a quick question. You said next week and the following week have both been canceled. This was a committee of the whole, so will September 4th also be committee of the whole?
Maybe September 4th will be a council meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just thought I heard someone say committee of the whole and I just didn't want people not to come thinking of this the same thing.
Two weeks. And it's, yes, that's correct. It's a Tuesday because of Labor Day.
Just real quickly before we adjourn, there is a Welcome to Urbana piece that's going to be distributed to students over the next couple of weeks that Tom Carino and his staff have worked on. And there's a lot of art, subcommittee stuff that was on your desk, including a couple publications from them. So I want to thank everybody involved in putting both of those together. I know Tom did a lot of work on this and I'll see all your bright and shiny faces Saturday morning, so.
I haven't heard anything more about that. Okay. Well, seeing that there's no more business, this meeting stands adjourned and September 4th, 5th? Fourth is our next meeting, which will be council.